Calling in for a message.
Thank you.
I'm getting your questions, yeah. I would just move in for a minute while we get the meeting set. If everyone will bear with us for one minute. I hope I have enough juice. Okay, let's bring this in to room. Okay, I'm gonna mute myself. Can anyone hear me? Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay, so let me figure out how to mute myself.
Absolutely.
Because that's bad. Hello, unmute now.
Who was present?
Um, so we have. Uh, you can ask us. As we come up, we have a call. Can everyone online hear us? Perhaps Cory could be confirmed?
I can confirm.
Yeah. Okay, so I have two phones that are online that I can see are either of them. Member, uh, one's a phone, one's just a screen that looks like a ceiling. Um, can I have confirmation of who's on?
Yeah, Christine is the iPhone.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah.
So we have Cory. Cory, Hunter, Mafina, Cory, and Christine Mazada.
We'll do a roll call.
Okay. Christine, do you hear us?
Tony, can you do me a favor and just try turning on your microphone and seeing if that's different for me on my end?
I see Christine now. You're Cory, I can hear you.
Yeah, just that the, uh, the, the room ambience is not good on the Zoom.
Yeah, I know. Is Hunter online too? Hunter, can you hear us?
He's not muted.
Yes, yes, I can hear you. Um, I don't have, um, I have a desktop computer without a camera, so I'm calling in, but I can see everything.
Okay, Kristen Delvin, you're online as well, taking notes minutes?
Yes, sir, I am.
And Christine Mazada, you're online as well?
Yeah, she was just muted.
She's right there. I'm here, I'm, I just had a big dog disaster and it's over though, so. Um.
Okay.
I'm gonna mute myself again.
Okay, no problem. I'd love to have a, in a corner, like a second meeting. Unfortunately, which a lot of people still say.
One person short?
No, we're okay, we've got four people.
Alright.
You need, uh, uh. Well, you don't need that for literally because you already, you know, it's okay.
Right.
I'm gonna go ahead and start it.
The motor vehicle, you have maybe three or we obviously.
Motor vehicle, you need three. Alright.
Are you at four? At the door.
Okay.
So you want me to do the work right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Tony can fill in too?
Present.
Lenny Tubbs? Brian Matson asked to be excused. Um, Christine Mazada?
She's present.
Yep. Cory Whiteside?
Present.
Ryan Zalik asked to be excused.
Here comes Nelson.
Hunter Mafina?
I am here.
Nelson?
I'm Nelson, I think that might be my wife on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Hi Nelson.
I, yeah, I was, uh, we have a Nelson on the board too, but.
He's no longer on.
He's no longer on board, but I said.
So he confused us.
It was confusing. Okay, we're all set, uh, my name is Tommy Frankelangia and, uh, I'm chairing this, uh, only word appeals. As indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this is an in-person meeting with remote access by Zoom and telephone conference. Remote meeting access was provided and hosted by, on the town website for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate. For those listening, I would ask you mute your device or phone if you're able to do so, so we don't give you background feedback. When it's time for individuals to speak, I'll ask you to unmute your phone, identify yourself. If a number of people ask to speak, we ask that you be patient until it's returned. Two important reminders, uh, every time you speak, please state your name and title for the record. Second, try not to speak over somebody else, you know, if you can, because, uh, this whole meeting is being recorded and, you know, uh, we need to have a clear recording of what's going on. As indicated on the agenda, public hearings will be heard for each application with applicants presenting their request and responding to questions. After the public hearings are concluded, we'll go into the regular meeting, which remains open to the public who are listening, but no new testimony can be given. So what's important is that we have new business and old business. We go through, we hear the applications and, or the, the receipt during the new business portion of the meeting. And then we have a recess if you need to, and then we go into old business. Uh, and the old business portion of the meeting, we vote on the applications that we heard during the new business portion of the meeting. The only thing that is, is that we cannot introduce any new information. If somebody forgets to say something during the new business portion, that's gonna change things. We can't introduce it legally, so we're kind of behind the eight ball on that. Anything that you'd have to say should be said during the new business portion of the meeting. Because like, once we go into old business, we've always got to do the vote. And we vote with the information that we have in the first half of the meeting. Um, that, that's, uh, probably the only thing that we, you know, really have to, uh, say here too legally. Uh, other than that, we're, we're pretty good, but, uh, if there's any questions about, uh, procedures, anything like that, you know, please raise your hand, otherwise I'm just getting started with the agenda. Or we're gonna skip the, uh, election of officers and the approval of minutes. For, uh. I'm gonna skip the election of officers and the approval of minutes for this meeting because we, uh, kind of like have a pair of bones meeting going on here. And this is postponed to next month, I guess. You know?
That's right.
I mean, I can choose for here.
Notation.
Uh, this first app, applications, ZBA 2022 dash O2, Brian and Kerry Nelson are requesting a variance for a set here at five feet for an attached two-story garage addition where 10 feet is required for grown zoning regulation 5B5 in the envelope. Speaking for the application, uh, please come up and sign in and use the microphone to, uh, talk about your application. Sure, thank you.
I'll just remind everyone, when you speak into the microphone over there, because of the way our recording system is working, try to speak directly to the microphone. Yeah. Go off to the sides, it doesn't, the people online, um, have difficulty hearing. And I'll be trying to bring up the, um, meeting documents on the screen.
Go ahead, what is yours?
So I'm applying for a, uh, as you described, a four foot or five foot, uh, to the 10 foot to my neighbor for, in an enlargement to our garage in, in Shunutap. Um, I forwarded the, um, the sketch that I purchased for, um, for this meeting to Lenny Tubbs, I didn't know he was gonna be here, so he has it in his email. Um, I wasn't able to print it for some reason, I was able, I was only able to get my original. Why, I, everything I paid for and had sketched wasn't printing out today, so, um, I forwarded it. I did forward it to any of you guys as well.
I'm forwarding it to me right now.
Yes?
And I'll bring it up on the screen.
Well, we have the plot line.
I think it's the, is it the architetchalls?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 I don't, yeah. But we have a plot line.
Yeah, you have, you have the plot, but you don't have, um, kind of the, again, we don't know who you're gonna approve us for, so we didn't know, I just got a sketch based on what we're looking to do. Sure, I'm gonna be a little bit lacking in. You have the Wi-Fi password. Plug-ins, so you can install this.
I have no idea what it is.
You know what, my phone, actually, my phone.
I just know I have one.
Uh, email? Oh, first.
I'm right there.
Come on, you're already in there.
Yep.
You run the little company, your phone never stops ringing. Shut down.
So you have a gable roof over, matching the gable roof of the house. But it's second floor.
Here we are.
You have a gable roof matching over the gable roof of the house, for the second floor, and then you're eliminating, uh, the existing, uh, walkway between the garage and the, or breezeway, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
Okay, my, my room.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was good.
Oh, it was the agenda. It's not the agenda. That I sent you.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I was looking up the room. I have it here, so.
You know what, do we want to maybe, um, come back to this application?
I have it right here.
When we, but we can't share that.
Oh.
And the, if the board can't see it, if, can I diagonally explain this? Um, if the board can't see it, the, we have the applicant members online able to see it as well as the public that's participating from the public area.
I can forward.
I mean, it's part of the display, so we need that sent.
Can I log in this computer, but then I get forwarded, because it's right here.
Right, but you have to log into the.
Is that a problem?
To the Wi-Fi, and I need to get the Wi-Fi from somebody else in town, I don't have.
You don't have it, oh.
I don't know it, I believe someone else that's here does, so.
Does, uh, Kristen have the Wi-Fi password?
Use a hotspot on your phone.
I got hotspot, you can log in.
Just log in, no.
But my suggestion is we skip to the next item and then come back to this one.
Sure. Okay, that's.
After he has.
Yeah, you use the hotspot.
Send it to.
Use the hotspot and, uh, you gotta.
Use it on my phone, okay.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, I believe you would need a motion to postpone this, uh, to, to, uh, pause this item and hear it after the next item. And then take a vote too.
Uh, okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, suspend this item until we get more information later on in the meeting. Do I have a second? Or a motion?
Cory, you're, you're muted if you're talking, Cory.
Whiteside, I second.
I have a motion.
Yep.
All in favor?
Whiteside, aye.
Aye. Hunter, Christine?
Yep, aye.
Um, I'm, I'm fine with aye, I wasn't sure if I was seated though.
Yeah, you're seated.
I announced you're seated for the meeting.
Hunter, yeah, you, you, yes, you are seated for the meeting.
I'm sorry?
Hunter, you are seated for the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'm connected.
And you want to call item two? And have a look if you start?
Yes, uh, ZBA 2022 dash O3, 221 Longview Drive, Lucas Zagrebny?
Zagrebny.
Zagrebny. I knew that was right. Requesting variance for a front yard setback of 36 feet when 75 feet is required. And side setbacks of 30 and 13 feet or 50 feet each is required for road zoning regulation 5A10. For addition to the second story, front and rear porches and garage to the existing, that confirmed house in the RE6 zone. Speaking for the application, please come on. Good evening, Lucas Zagrebny, 221 View Drive. Um, asking for a variance on the setbacks of my property at 221 Longview Drive. Uh, we're trying to build a second story addition, uh, to the house and, uh, connected garage. Uh, this is an add, uh, bedrooms and storage to the house. Uh, the current situation of the house, as far as setbacks go, uh, the house is fully in the setbacks, uh, are currently in place by zoning regulations. Uh, when the house was built back in the 60s, the house was, or, uh, for those zoning regulations, everything was fine. Uh, but right now, as far as it goes, or, uh, for the current regulations, uh, we cannot do anything to this house as the setback is totally in the back of the house. Um, so we cannot do anything that we want. Uh, so we're asking for a variance to, uh, get that second story on there.
Just describe the, the work you're going to be doing, like, describe what you expect.
Well, uh, yes, we're gonna be adding, uh, to the right side of the house, we're gonna be adding, um, two rooms. Um, and then the center of the house, uh, we're just raising the roof, uh, to have an open cathedral roof, uh, ceiling. And the left of the house, which is the garage, is gonna be, uh, just storage space above garage. We can't go towards the back of the house if we wanted to add something to the back of the house. Instead of going out, we can't really do that because we have a slope right in the back of the house, uh, which is pretty decent slope, can't really build on it. Uh, which is probably the reason why the house was originally built where it was, so close to the road. Uh, because if you look at the setback map from the 60s, the house is only about two inches away from that setback line, uh, from the front of the house. And, uh, we have room to the, to the left of the house, so we're actually asking, the other thing we're asking is to put a, uh, roof in, uh, on the left side of the garage, uh, just for storage. Uh, you see a shed there currently on the, uh, on the maps, uh, which is not gonna be there anymore, so we're asking just to put a, uh, like, an open roof there, just so we can store stuff on there. And then, uh, above the deck in the back, which is an existing deck, also, uh, we'll have to put a roof over that deck. Um, so all of this is required, I mean, a variance just because the house is where it is. Um, because the, the setback changed over the years, so. How many bedrooms do you have in the whole house? In the whole house? Yeah. What was, three? Three. One, two, three? Yes. Your upstairs is becoming one bedroom and a study. Uh, and an office. So you have about 3,000 square feet? And more than that, 3,500?
Two, 2,000.
3,500?
Um, what's, new level space is 2,221, so level space. We're going from 15, 17, 1,500, 700, through 2, 2, 2, 1.
Kind of around about 700. As far as going up, we're not, we're not changing the current footprint of the house. Uh, as far as that variance goes, we're only going straight up. Uh, we're not, not going outward anywhere, which way, as far as the second story goes, uh, it's only the front porch. Uh, it's only the front porch and the, uh, and the garage side roof. Uh, that we're really, you know, extending out. Towards those setbacks.
Gotcha, okay. Does anybody have any questions, uh, from Mr. Zagrebny?
This is white side, I do. Hi, Lukish. Um, I, I appreciate your statement, uh, where you actually tried to, tried to put into words some of your hardship. Uh, many of our applicants, uh, don't do that step, but, um. In your second paragraph there, you said that you bought the property with the intent of expanding. Uh, my question, my first question was, did, did you research the zoning on this before you bought? And, and did you find, did you find anything, or did you have any discussions with anyone, uh, regarding your expansion plans before you bought?
No, we did not. There's not something that is done usually when you purchase a property.
Well, I mean, if you had the intent to put a second floor on there, and if you got denied on a variance. Uh, you know, I mean, you'd, you'd basically, you'd, you'd be, you'd be out of a, of a plan.
I would have never thought that putting a second story on without expanding the house any which way outwards and not going over the height limit. Would, you know, that there's any regulation that will not allow me to do that. I'm not changing the footprint of the house by going up, and I'm still below the height allowance.
Okay, and then, um, uh, on that footprint, uh, that you talk about, uh, that they, the lean to, the proposed lean to. Does essentially, uh, expand that footprint. I mean, I, I see the shed there to the side of the garage. But if, and that, that probably is not conforming to, if I'm correct, uh, cause it's not, it's too close to the garage to be conforming, but. Um, but the, the lean to proposed. Does technically expand that footprint, and I suppose that you can't, there, there's no way you can make the, the fifty foot anyway. So I guess the question there is. Does that part really have to be part of the, the request of variance? I mean, is that, is that a, is that a deal breaker for you not to have the lean to?
No, it is not, and as I current, as I previously stated, uh, when applying for variance and everything. I am for that second story addition.
Yeah.
That is my main concern here. As far as that led in, that was just an additional thing, since we were going for variance, I figured we might as well ask for anything else that.
Yeah.
We might need, but no, that is not a deal breaker. If we can't do it, um, you know, with that in there, we'll just eliminate that.
I'm not proposing that, but I, I'm just curious. So I do tend to agree with you on, on, uh, you know, building up. Uh, so the, the last question is, especially with regard to that lean to, what, have you gotten statements from the Ellison's or the Buritas? Ellison's are more important because that lean to affects their side?
Uh, I mean, we speak daily, but, I mean, we're having issues, whatever we're doing now. We have a write-up, they got the letters that we, uh, we sent out, so they know what's going on. There's a shed there right now that's not in their way. They, they don't mind the shed. And with the, uh, the new, uh, roof, that's not gonna go any further than that, that existing shed right now.
Understood, yeah, okay. All right, thank you, that's it.
Well, any additional questions? Thank you.
So I just kinda wanna bring this somewhat together, just to make it clear for everyone, just to give it to get these up on the screen while he was speaking. Um, it is an older home in a neighborhood which is comprised of usually non-conforming structures. So as everyone could see when I shared on the screen, hopefully it's the screen, um. You can see that the, uh, setback line of most of the houses is fairly consistent all the way around. As all being non-conforming to existing requirements now. Um, the single story was built basically along the same lines of the other, sorry, just said that. Um, it does, the neighborhood does have a mix of single family and two-story homes. Um, I drove through the neighborhood, it's a variety, it's a very effective neighborhood as far as the style of houses go. Um, and as he submitted, but I wanted to make sure, is very clear that the house itself, um, is entirely within the front setback. And approaches to what would be the side, um, side setbacks if. Um, it wasn't within the front, it would also be within the sides, the front porch as well as the, um. The lean to. Extend the footprint and the, however, the second floor and the rear porch roof do not extend. They are over an existing footprint. Um, as discussed, upward extension does require a variance. Um, the lot does flare out towards the rear, so it gets wider.
A lot steeper though.
Steeper, yes, true. And to the best of my knowledge, um, in answer to Corey's question, to Mr. Whiteside's question, um, to the best of my knowledge, we did not get any correspondence, um, from neighbors. Or other concerns with regard to the application.
Okay. Any additional comments?
If anyone online would like to scroll to any particular screen, just let me know, and I will.
Lenny said he might join the meeting.
He's there.
But I haven't heard from her yet.
You're muted, Lenny. You wanna join?
Yeah.
Oh, you're there, great, and I'm glad to see, glad to hear you there. You, my, uh, Mike Lenny is being, uh, in.
Joining at seven thirty-six. I don't suggest, unless he's been here a while, we, um, wait to see him to the next item.
Actually, uh, he's been here for a while, so he's okay, yeah, the next item is gonna be, uh, uh, we're gonna, I. Can I have a motion to close the hearing on this, uh, application for, uh, Zagrebny, Mr. Zagrebny? This is application, uh.
Yes, for public comment?
Two, two twenty long view drive?
You asked for public comment?
Uh, yeah, and there's no public in there. You know? Uh, these guys are all, I.
Hybrid meetings, we have to make sure everything's out loud.
Take these things, uh, I'm trying, they can't, they can't even see me. Can I have a motion to close the hearing on this application?
I'll give the motion, this is on turf.
Well, a motion made in a second?
I'll second it, Lenny.
Okay, we have a motion made, seven, uh, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
White side, aye.
Aye.
Aye, Christine, aye.
We have five aye. Okay, um. Okay, that's, here and now, the patient is closed, we're gonna go back to, uh, reopen the, uh, application that we suspended for, uh. Sixty-eight brandy lane. Maureen, have you got the information on that?
Yes. I just forwarded it to you.
This application is for a, uh, replacing the existing mudroom garage or the two-car garage and a, uh, room over the second floor over the garage.
Yeah, Curtis.
Beautiful.
Existing is on the left, and the, uh, issue is on the right.
Right.
He's not doing it.
That's okay.
Can everyone see the elevations for brandy lane?
Yes.
Thank you for confirming.
So basically, to recap, uh, just for, uh, uh, for Mr. Tubbs, uh, the application, the, the house on, on the left is the existing, uh, the single garage or the mudroom. On the right, uh, the applicant is looking for about five feet, I think, is that what it was? Uh, five, yeah, a five yard setback of five feet, where ten feet is required, um, for that two-car garage plus the, uh, room up above it, uh, which is what, another bedroom or?
Yeah, it'll be a master bedroom.
Okay. Better insulate the ceiling in the garage. Insulate the ceiling in the garage?
Yeah.
Otherwise, that whole feet. It's obvious, right, but, um, some people don't, but anyway, uh, basically that, uh, outside the right is what you're looking at for the, uh, final result. And the plot plan shows that pretty, pretty much. Are there any questions, uh, from, uh, people at the Zoom meeting? In the cyber space?
No questions here.
White side, I have a couple again.
Uh, it was pretty self-explanatory, man, this, I, once we got the, uh, architectural drawings, uh, everything worked out pretty good, so. Did a good job of that. Thank you. Um, Maureen, any staff comments?
I thought Corey said he had some questions.
Maureen?
Yeah, just a couple here, uh.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, please.
Mr. Nelson, uh, just looking at the application, and the required portion that has you describe your hardship is blank.
I filled hardship and submitted it. Um, I can't remember if I, I added it as an additional to the application. Or if I put it in that.
I see a letter, but I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I, I'm really not understanding the hardship here.
So the hardships, um, are, um, we have a few different hardships. For, for one, as far as the, the plot itself goes, um, we can't go back, it's not deemed as wetland, but it's flood. Besides that, we would need to go into the left, um. For the garage, we would like, um, a two-car garage because we've had several incidents of, uh, break-ins, attempted break-ins on brandy lane and, um. Security is a big issue with us and we related to how our vehicles indoors. We have almost regular, um. People, um, breaking into cars, um, Ivan, he really gets up early every morning, he, as he sees them and confronts them regularly. I've had a car stolen out of my driveway, um, my wife has had hers broken into. Um, it's because we're behind the high school, we kind of associate it with high crime. Kids are always up and down our street and parking in the cul-de-sac, and we feel like we're kind of patrol, like, people just see opportunities. That way, and just having that ability to park inside of a garage would be, uh. Would, would make us feel and sleep a lot better.
Um, I got a quick quote for you, Corey, uh, there, there's a letter on page six. Uh, it's just a, basically, uh, you know, uh, it's signed by Brian and, uh, uh, Terry Nelson.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
And basically, it, it shows, it, it's titled hardship in the top, uh, right corner.
I see it.
Uh, and I guess I, I, I was assuming that that was hardship, just this homepage was kind of like, probably the hardship that, uh, they've experienced with, uh. The existing property. Uh, I know that, uh, yeah, there is a lot of, there's been a lot of cars that they've broken into lately, but.
I, I know we're not unique in that, in that.
So I, uh, but, I can understand that, uh, it can be frustrating.
You know, um, our house was built, um, in the fifties, uh, one-car, you know, household, and I have, uh, a son coming up and a daughter coming up. And my wife and I, and it's, um, it's gonna have to have, um, some more space. Um, you know, the hardships that we detailed in that, uh, page was, you know, my son's room is really small. Um, this would allow him to, and he, as he grows, he's outgrowing that room, would allow him to, to a bigger room that's me, have a master bedroom above the garage. We can't go back because of all the flooding, the only place we can go to the garage is towards, um, our neighbors and losses. Unopposed of the, uh, they're unopposed of the, uh, addition.
And also the, uh, the, the five feet, so that, that, there, there's no way that you can do this project without getting the additional five feet. For that garage?
There's no way, yes, it's, uh, from the, uh, gentleman that we have, uh. Have to go over, um, cause we're at twelve feet, that would put us at twenty-four over two, towards that way. Um, which would just give us a second of a garage bay for ours.
Well, I guess I'm looking at the picture on the elevation, and it seems like there's at least a few feet there on the side of the two-car garage.
So, so that's a walkway that we're gonna eliminate, um, it's already there as a walkway.
I'm, I'm speaking about the, the proposed picture, uh, really, it's like the third, the third picture down. Where I, you know, I can see there's at least a few feet of, of additional space to the left of the garage door.
Yeah, so we're gonna eliminate a, um, a laundry room, uh, and add, add some space there as well.
Now, I'm, I'm speaking about the proposed picture of the, of the twenty-four foot wide garage. It just, it makes, the picture makes it look like there's a significant additional storage space. You know, foot, like, two or three feet of wall space to the left of the garage door.
I saw that I might be a staircase to get upstairs.
Corey, am I on the right?
Yeah, you're on the right page, it's right in the center of the screen, right there. You know, like where it shows the proposed elevation with the, with the diagonal, yeah, that, that picture right there. And I'm just looking at that additional, that additional piece right there, and I know it's probably not enough to, to take off five feet, but. I'm just, I'm, I'm just looking at, you know, like, I guess if, if we variance one foot, we might as well variance five feet is what I'm thinking, but. Either way.
Okay, I'm talking about the left side of the garage.
Yeah, because that's where the variance is requested, that's, that's the ten feet that they're trying to make, but.
I know, but I thought you were talking about the right side because there's a little, uh, space between the house and the garage.
Well, yeah, both sides, yeah.
Might be a staircase to go up to master bedroom. So, you know, uh, you, you, you can't have less than a three-foot staircase, uh, and you maybe got a couple of feet there if you end up with, uh. That's probably a single door, maybe a fourteen-foot door, it's not even gonna be a sixteen-foot door, but I, I'm not sure what it is right now, but. Uh, if you chop up that last couple of feet, you're probably gonna wind up being able to fit two UGOS in there, that's about it.
Yeah. Okay, and then the last question, because this variance does affect, uh, what on the, on that side is the O'Donnells. Uh, I would be looking for, you know, some kind of input from them too, but I guess similar to the, to the last case, if they're, if they're properly noticed and they're not choosing to give input, then I guess.
Uh, so I, I spoke with them, um, I invited them to come down, um, they're excited about it, I actually did the exact same project we're doing. When they moved into their house, they didn't need a variance because they had the space. Um, we're just buttoned right up against that wall right there of property, and, um, uh, they look at it as an increase in their own home value. Not, not opposed.
That comment reminds me, I did have, uh, on that last statement on your hardship, uh, you say that. The need for the variance is unique to our lot, as the other lots have had the space to expand without the need. Uh, and I guess, uh, how do we know that that's true? Maureen, maybe you could speak to that?
Sure, you would have on file, say, apply for a variance.
I probably couldn't catch that information on the fly. I can pull up the aerial view, it shows the houses.
May I speak from Zoom?
I won't be able to determine if any of them have, uh, have had additions, and whether or not it was. What a, like, if, if this was an addition and whether. would have, like, if, if this was an addition and whether or not it required a variance or if it's just that way. Um, I did note when I was out there that, um, the house to the north appears to have a similar, um, small typical nineteen fifties garage as opposed to a modern day garage. That's a thing. I think that's terminology you guys used in the past. They do have a little bit more of a side yard. This does have a limited side yard, but many of the houses up the street appear to be similar. Again, I can't tell if any of them have, had additions or if they were built that way. You can see that, that area now, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's all from me.
May I speak from home?
Who? Oh, thank you, Corey. Does anybody else have any comments?
Was that Christine that wanted to jump in? Somebody wanted to jump in.
It's Carrie Nelson. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Carrie.
Um, before they showed the overhead, they kind of showed it at the end, but I was going to say that some of the houses down the street are really close to each other and ours wouldn't even be that close. But you can see that at the end she was showing you that. And I do not believe they're additions, but I'm not a hundred percent on that.
Cause my bill pre-zoned.
Closer, closer to, um, the Patterson way.
Hmm, thank you.
So it wouldn't change the look of the neighborhood at all?
We didn't even have a, uh, a sketch on file with the town or we had a sketch, but not official.
I think the elevations look very good. They, they look, they look pleasing.
This is Lenny and if you've been around the neighborhood, you're gonna find out that all of the houses in that whole area were built back in the fifties and are all built on very small lots. Some were shifted to one side of the lot, some were shifted to the other side of the lot, and some people may have room and others may not.
I wonder if that was pre-zoning, Lenny?
Oh, probably not pre-zoning, but it was, um, previous to the existing zoning regulations.
Oh, yeah.
Requirements, uh, is very likely, although that, it was, I don't wanna claim what zone it was, but it's been someone A, I, I think it was A was the smallest size lot typical of the area around, um, the downtown area of Harding Street, New Brick Road, et cetera, and over here, they, they're just smaller lots that, are currently required, although this, these all seem to be conforming size plots. They may not have the lot width.
Okay, anyone comments? Staff comments?
Second, our lefty zone. I'll tell you really quickly, no one can probably hear me because I'm not talking to my wife for about, hold on one second. The R eleven zone, um, requires seventy-five feet of frontage, so these lots are narrower as you move further down the street. But they all comply with the current zone. Procedure. Staff comments? Uh, just a couple of things, it's just gonna reiterate a couple of things he said. I also noted that it's an older neighborhood with relatively small garages as typical of the nineteen fifties. Um, the currently, the house is twelve point two feet from the side yard with ten feet is required, so it currently meets the zoning requirement. And the proposed width of the two car garage is at twenty-four feet, um, which is a pretty standard two car garage, um, for today, the additions that extends back deeper than, uh, two, um, traditional two car garage at twenty, uh, twenty-four feet, a typical two car garage, it's a two just garage would be a twenty-four by twenty-four. This one's extending back forty-five feet, which then results in, uh, rear of it being only five point nine feet from the, um, side yard, um, lot line. Um, which has provided the architectural plans, which I also noted, and then I just have a notation for the record, um, that it's been observed that there are commercial vehicles often parked along the road and knowing the applicant has a, um, the Z business wants to remind the owner that a single commercial vehicle is allowed in the residential zone and that any business operation should be in a permitted zone, yeah, for, um, if they can meet the criteria of occupant's location obtained as such, it's a compliance regardless. No violation was found. And it was an observation while I was out there, I'm having response to that, so just wanted to get it on the record.
Sometimes I bring a party bus out to clean it out, just, just, just a detail that my driver, I put it back in my lap. I'm zoning for.
Single, single commercial vehicles allowed in residential zones, just a reminder.
Understood.
And that's all I have as far as comments on this, this is your traditional variance of the mission of the board making and determination.
Okay.
Do you want me to change the screen for anyone and you wanna look at different?
Uh, would that staff comments, would that, uh, comments from the, uh, members and the public comments?
Um, going back to the question about the elevation of the, uh, from, okay, yeah.
I'm going back to the question about the elevation of what Mr. Whiteside was talking about, question number two, if you could ask, scroll up to that. Uh, you were talking about trying to eliminate the left side of that building. Uh, not really possible because of the structure. That's a, uh, that looks like a two car, uh, garage door that needs several feet on the side, on the left side of it, which you were trying to eliminate, uh, as far as, uh, wind load racing, uh, which is needed there on each side of the door. If you eliminate that, then you have to make the door narrower, which then makes it a single car door. I believe per architect, that it's probably the narrowest, uh, they can go.
Can I just ask you please, uh, even though it's your record, the last year, restate your name for this record?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Is there a sixteen foot door or fourteen foot? Fifteen foot door?
I'm gonna say yes, yes, I think so.
If I might be, if I see this, I might see.
Is there a framing plant? That would show measurements. That's the only thing. Probably if you had a foot and you decided to go, you're okay. I mean, let's say if you go for a bigger door, you can put a bigger door. If you have a foot on any side of the door, you need, need a half inch fish plate.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what they got on the drawing. It's a two, one, one door rather than two.
Yeah, well, you need maybe a couple of two by twos up and above on that, half inch plate, because otherwise it's gonna sag on you.
Right.
Okay, but you know, that's, that's not the immediate, but that's, uh. Um, thanks for that comment, but is anybody else have any comments? Uh, I'm making a motion to close the hearing on the application.
I'll second it. This is Lenny.
Uh, motion made, seconded, uh, can you take a roll, Maureen?
Chairman, thank you.
Hi.
Mr. Chucks?
Hi.
Mr. Vazada?
Uh, hi.
Commissioner Vethina?
Hi.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you. Application ZBA two thousand twenty-two dash oh four, fourteen oh six Chamberlain Highway. Uh, Tomline Auto LLC is requesting motor vehicle use application, location approval for used car dealers and general repair license for rolling down a regulation. Uh, eleven R are subject to four C at fourteen oh six Chamberlain Highway in the area itself. Property is owned by a tax garage LLC.
I, I have a point of order on this and once, then I'm actually hoping that Mr. Chucks may be able to, may have firsthand knowledge, uh, with regard to the, we just discovered that they have not put up a public hearing sign. Um, and in that, the, you have the exception for variances, um, but the way the state law is, uh, auto uses, the, a public hearing is not necessarily required, although we require one. Um, I recall that we've always required public hearing signs for garages and that is a flaw, but do you recall there being, anyone recall there being an exception for garages not to have a sign?
Was, was a letter sent out to the body of the?
Letters were sent, sent out, yes. I mean, did you see the, the letter? They, I just looked through the regulations and I'm sorry, just look by, you know, doing the four different commissions right now, this, I, I can't grasp this at the core part of my brain. My recollection is that we require public hearing signs for motor vehicle uses. And always have.
Mr. Chucks?
Anyone recall?
Definitely have in the past.
We have required, yeah. I think the only exception, like I said, is the variances, four yard variances. Um, while we did note, um, in the, in the meeting invitation I sent out as well as posted outside the doors here that two of the other applicants also failed to properly notice, one because of the sign and the other because of the, uh, their mailing was incorrect. Um, I'm wondering, and if I could change the subject a minute, and we just, if we delay the public hearing, if we could possibly schedule a special meeting so that all three of these applicants, for their lack of understanding of the checklist and requirements or, well, the one, one actually had a flawed notice, um, the mailing, they did the mailing, it was just a flawed mailing. Um, if we could try to schedule a special meeting in order to move these a lot more quickly so that these businesses aren't delayed.
Sure.
But I would advise as staff that this next item not be heard without having the sign having been put up.
Well, we would be doing something illegal if we did that, so I, I guess that probably is something that we can't really do. But we can also have a special meeting to try to accommodate the folks um, for this application and for the other two applications that you talked about. That's why members are willing to do that, I, I'll take. Anybody else have any comments?
Think we have to go with, uh, postponing and maybe having a special meeting.
Uh, Corey, any thoughts?
No, I mean, I, I concur with the proposed table or postpone.
Um, I, you know, rather than ask Christine and Hunter if they have any thoughts, uh, maybe I can, uh, just make a motion to do that. Postpone to a special meeting or you can set that up at some point within the next month.
I'm in agreement.
I agree.
Well, we got everybody in agreement, so I, uh, I can make a motion, but you can try to.
I don't, uh, it would have to be this into the second week, it looks like. So, June sixth or possibly the following week. And that would still be two weeks ahead of the public hearing that is next regular meeting that's scheduled.
Um.
Possibly. Eight, maybe. We can refer open dates, but if I, if I can pull, if I can pull, um, we could do it the week before that, if all possible.
June seventh?
Seven, that is a town council meeting, but you have meetings the same night as town council all the time.
The seventh works for me. This is Lenny.
But you have a, on the, uh, in the, uh, uh, the zoning buildings and the building part.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll secure a meeting room prior to the meeting.
I'll make a motion to, uh, move this to a special meeting along the other two applications at the end, uh, to June seventh.
Can you?
Tony, I don't think we need a motion for that. I think we just need to, uh, go back to proceed, you know, this has to be procedural. I don't think you need a motion because we don't have the, you know, the proper, uh, notices.
Oh, um, I've done, you know, if everybody's in agreement, then we can just, you know, go back and try to secure June seventh as a tentative date for the meeting.
Yeah, it depends on the notice. I mean, if they, if they notice and they talk to Maureen again, then Maureen can set up the meeting.
How many days notice do they have to have, though?
Ten.
Ten.
Okay, so they need to get that right up, right away.
About the second date they could possibly do it. So I'll have to, I'll have to secure a form and confirm with the other two applicants as well. Uh, does that leave work with this applicant?
I just, uh, now, as far as the mailing notice, you don't have to resend that because they've been noticed since meeting. So any continuation of this meeting, they would have been here too.
I, I was actually just going to comment on that, that, um, we'll announce at this meeting that it will be properly posted as to that date and one, it's listing that's an interested party can certainly call our office to confirm that date, but it will also be posted on the special meeting agenda. That will be arranged as soon as possible. And that way the, the, only the flaws in the notices need to be fixed. No one, none, none of the applicants would have to redo the notice they did properly.
Right, okay.
So we do need a motion to continue those, or to postpone those items to the next, the scheduled special meetings.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to postpone, uh, ZBA twenty twenty-two dash oh four, ZBA twenty twenty-two dash oh six and ZBA twenty twenty-two dash oh seven. Make a motion to postpone those hearings to the, to a special meeting that will be determined by, uh, the zoning enforcement officer or the zoning manager to come. And, uh, tentatively June seventh, but, uh, you know, if, if that's available to everybody, that would be fine.
I'll second it. This is Lenny.
Okay, uh, can I take a roll?
Commissioner Frank Gladia?
Hi.
Mr. Chucks?
Hi.
Mr. Vazada?
Hi.
Mr. Whiteside?
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Vethina?
Hi.
Okay, I'll take care of that. Thank you.
I just need to, is, it's seven because we're ready to sign some pretty quick, so.
We'll be able to confirm it in the morning. We'll be able to confirm it in the morning, I have to secure a meeting room, I have to secure a quorum, and I have to make sure the other applicants are available that day too, or, or are in schedule for the last week.
Okay.
Whether they want.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Application ZB A two thousand twenty-two dash oh five, one nineteen West Square Road, map ten three, block eighty-three, lot twenty-eight dash one eight, Merle McKenzie Truck Bar two LLC is requesting a modification to a sale of alcohol beverages location approval to allow live entertainment for an existing restaurant liquor permit for Berlin zoning regulation eleven B and the PSA zone, property is owned by OSJ LLC. Speaking for the application.
Merle McKenzie, co-owner of the truck park. So, we're seeking permission to add some additional forms of entertainment that we would have done in our first application, but wasn't aware that each individual type of entertainment needs to be specifically stated for our alcohol permit. So initially, we put on acoustic guitar and bands, which was granted, and then when we wanted to run a DJ night, or a trivia night, or a comedian, any of those things need to be formally stated for the state application. And so, we've made an application today to amend our permit so that those other additional forms of entertainment will be allowed.
What other forms are you playing? As I see over here, it says, no exotic dancers, but this guy's acoustics, concerts, disc jockeys, karaoke, live bands, plays and shows, comedians, sporting events, magicians, are playing shows.
Yeah, it, it, it's.
Large crowd?
What's that?
How big of a crowd? I mean, it's.
I don't know, we have a four hundred person, I can see, so that's as big as you can get.
Oh, okay, four hundred persons.
So all we're looking to do is satisfy the state statute that says we have to tell them if we're having a DJ, or karaoke, or what have you, we're not looking for anything too all foreign, outside the norm of what typically happens in a place like ours, not, like you said, looking for strippers or anything like that, but we are looking for the ability to have DJs and the like. And to the best of my knowledge, I listed, you know, things that, I don't even know if I would ever have a magician, but I put it in there just in case, because that's what the state requires.
No stripper, my wife would have liked to ask me if she runs something, but it's actually not really something that, you know. Something that Tom really kind of frowns on, but I mean, if, any other type of entertainment, I guess, is probably not an issue, like, it doesn't sound like that place is turning into a, you know, a hell rages place or anything like that, it's been pretty quiet.
We're trying to be a family-friendly entertainment, so we have a lot of families in there, we, we want to keep it that way, but, you know, for instance, we're going to, in June, do a Top Gun themed night, and we're going to have a Top Gun trivia guy come in, so we need permission to do these things.
All right, right. Corey, Lenny, any questions?
I just had one, actually a couple of questions. What type of sporting events you planning on, if you're planning on doing this in this, this area?
I believe I put that in there for the eventuality, if we ever did a one-man, one rep max bench press competition. Both my partner and I come from the fitness world, we used to own gyms, you know, at our, our location in Newton, we've had a couple of the world's strongest men competitors come in and put on exhibitions, they lift the log over their head or some such thing, so that's what I put in there as quote-unquote sporting events. Again, I'm trying to be a little bit more forward-thinking and not running afoul of state laws, so I literally wrote down everything I can think of at the moment.
And I guess my second question has to be, what about the outside venue you have out in front of the building with tables and alcohol?
What about it?
I was unaware that that was part of your original permit.
Oh, yeah, it was. Yeah, hundred percent it was. We had it approved.
Maureen, was that on the list?
I don't have that application in front of me, but to the best of my recollection, outdoor seating and the use of the front area was included, it was, it did not include the right-hand or north side, which was that where the movie theater got taken down from, which the original applicant we had several years ago for this space had talked about having an outdoor whole area out there for all kinds of things like volleyball and whatnot, and then their app, this application did not include that, but it did include, as I recall it, included the front of the building. I did not pull that application, I don't think, I can look to see if I have it, but I don't think so.
Okay, that, I may be confusing it with the other applications, because we have had a couple of applications on this property that kind of fell through right away.
This, this one also, you went to planning and zoning commission as well, correct? So they went to the planning and zoning commission for like the operation of the site as well. I believe, and there, and the outside seating is still able to be covered under the regulations that allow outdoor seating that happened throughout COVID as well. So, you, you will see outdoor areas continuing this season as a result of that, that don't come under anyone's purview really, other than administrators.
Well, like I said, I, I may have been confusing it with the other one, I know they were going outside on the, the north side of the lot, and I may be confusing that with this one.
I lied, I have it, I think, I think I have. If I have it all, if I have the whole plan, I can just have a piece of it.
Well, either way, I've been by there a couple of times and that outside area has been being used and it's been very calm and mild and everybody just enjoying themselves, so it's, I don't think I have a problem with it. Wanted to make sure that it was and we weren't going to run into a problem later, that's all.
Any additional comments?
So, I, I have an additional kind of, if you don't mind. Or a clarification, actually, we have comments later, but as I go through this folder file, on their initial approval, and this was what I recall, was their initial review approval, when they came through you, did have acoustics as well as live bands on the application. This is twenty twenty-one Truck Bar two LLC, that's due back straight. So, it did have those, and my recollection was, they started with, that his intent was to start with that kind of entertainment and then see how his business grew and whether or not he wanted to expand to include others, and now realizing that it did require an extension of liquor permit in order to do that, which we'll be coming back. I recall that conversation.
Any other comments? Scott comments? Not any additional commentary?
The other comments I had was, well, I wanted to reiterate that, I think, Chairman did a reasonable good job of that, however, that all the boxes are checked, acoustics, concerts, disc jockeys, karaoke, live bands, plays and shows, comedians, sporting events, and magicians, and exotic dancers is not checked, when I tell on the record, it is not checked, and it would also fall under additional requirements if it was checked, so. It's not confused as far as this, or this, this review. And that, I think, yeah, it probably may have, may or may not have answered this to your satisfaction, but whether or not the board would want to put any parameters on the categories, the ones that stood out for me, that they or may not require parameters, and again, discussion with the board, concerts and the sporting events in the place, just not really understanding what those might be, hopefully to describe that, so that was my comment. So we have not received, to the best of my knowledge, zoning has not received any, has not been made aware of any concerns relating to the operation of the business and/or the, the alcohol beverage permitting.
Okay. Any more comments?
There are no other comments and there's no other outside comments, I'd make a motion to close this portion of the hearing. This is Lenny.
Our motion's been seconded.
Somebody seconded it?
Yeah, I think Corey's seconded. Did you second that, Corey?
I will now, though, Whiteside's second.
Oh, somebody else must have seconded, must have. Thank you, Corey.
Chairman, there's a Frank Gladya?
Aye.
Mr. Tubbs?
Aye.
Mr. Vazada?
Aye.
Mr. Whiteside?
Aye.
Mr. Mathina?
Aye.
Okay, so, applications C, E, and F are off the list. We're going to vote on the other four applications, I mean, other, other three applications. ZB A two thousand twenty-two dash oh two sixty-eight Brandy Lane, Brian and Kerry Nelson are requesting a variance for a side yard of five feet or an attached two-story garage condition, where ten feet is required for zoning, for Berlin zoning regulation five B five, in the R eleven zone. Make a motion to approve the application.
I second Christine Vazada.
Motion made, seconded, is there any discussion?
On behalf of, in reference, some reasoning for the record, that is a requirement of the state law. To, reasoning, some reasoning for that.
Oh, you mean the variance for the Brandy Lane?
Yeah, that's what we just made a motion after.
Yeah, right. I, you know, the only thing I, the only thing I reference is the fact that it's the neighborhood, there's been no, no discussion, no comments, most of the houses in the neighborhood have very short lot lines, and I don't see any reason for not accruing it. Any other discussion? We have a motion made, we have a second, I guess you can do a roll call.
Chairman Frank Gladya?
Aye.
Mr. Tubbs?
Aye.
Mr. Vazada?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Aye.
And Commissioner Mathina?
Aye.
Okay. Application ZB A two thousand twenty-two dash oh three, two twenty Longview Drive, Lucas Cyber Building, right there, is requesting a variance for a front yard setback thirty-six feet, which seventy-five feet is required, and side setbacks is thirty feet and thirteen feet, where fifty is required for Berlin zoning regulations five A ten for additions of a second story, front and rear porches and garages to the existing non-protected house in the area six zone. I, I'll make a motion to approve this one because I looked at the elevation lines on one of the maps, and the elevation lines that that backyard drops down about twenty-five, thirty feet all the way to the back, but the first forty, fifty feet drop down about twenty feet, which is, I mean, you know, you need ghosts to probably take care of that backyard. It's just, it goes down very steep and I don't think it's it's, it's buildable, so I think there's a real good hardship in this particular situation. And no, nobody, again, nobody has made any comments in terms of letters that have been sent out. And it's a pie-shaped block, so it makes sense to, to approve it, but again, I, I'm looking for comments from the other board members. You know, if you can voice your opinions, I appreciate it.
I also.
You, you did make a motion, right? That was, that, all that talk, that was a motion to approve, right?
Yeah, we need a second for, I'll second it, this is Commissioner Tubbs. Now we can discuss.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think the footprint discussion is relevant, you know, the footprint really isn't being modified, and they're within their rights to, to move up as long as they're not affecting the character of the neighborhood.
May I ask for a clarification? If the item was, if, if the shed off the side or off the garage is included in the variance, or if, I understand it was modified or not modified for this and what the motion is.
I, I, I let it stand as it was, I mean, I didn't.
As proposed.
As proposed.
Okay.
You know, the only reason why is because they did a great job as far as the diagrams, as far as the submittal, you know, and stuff, but when you look at the lot lines, you look at the, I was going to call it fall lines, not fall lines, you look at the elevation lines that are on the, on the map, and the whole front, the whole front of the house is two hundred, and then within about ten feet down the back of the house, it drops down to one eighty, one eighty-three, and then drops down to one seventy, it's like, it's ridiculous, it's like, you know, it's, it's pretty steep. So it's not really a workable area, and, you know, it's, I think of it as a safety problem, if you did something back there, you know, other than a deck, with a nice fence around it, but, you know. Otherwise, it could be a little bit of a hazard back there, but anyway, we had a motion made, seconded, I guess you want to take a roll, if any, so any comments, please go ahead. I'll just take a roll. Aye.
Mr. Tubbs?
Aye.
Mr. Vazada?
Aye.
Mr. Whiteside?
Aye.
Mr. Mathina?
Aye.
Okay, I, I, that's approved. Application ZB A two thousand twenty-two dash oh five, one nineteen West Square Road, map ten three, block eighty-three, lot twenty-eight dash one eight, Merle McKenzie Truck Bar two LLC is requesting a modification to a sales of alcohol beverages location approval to allow live entertainment for an existing restaurant liquor permit for Berlin zoning regulations eleven B and the PSA zone, property is owned by OSJ LLC. So I have a motion to approve this application.
I'll make that motion, Tony, this is Lenny Tubbs.
This is Hunter Mathina, I'll second the motion.
Hunter, second the motion? Any discussion?
Nope.
I haven't seen any discussion now, but I mean, I think, Lenny did have some discussion about it previously, and he said it, guys, I, there'd be things, and everything was pretty cool, which gives credit to Merle and the South, pardon. That was like a Merle, bro, was it?
Not twice.
Not twice. I'd throw that in there. Uh, without barring any other questions, I mean, uh, Marie, can you take a roll call?
Chairman Franklin India?
Aye.
Mr. Tubbs?
Aye.
Mr. Vazada?
Aye.
Mr. Whiteside? Mr. Whiteside, are you muted? It looked like an eye.
Yeah, aye. Thanks, sir.
Um, and Commissioner Athena?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, beat me up.
Come down, have a beer and some pizza with us.
Okay, I know. Take care.
Thank you.
Um, I I'm postponing this election and this uh election uh approval of this till the next meeting. I I'm hoping that maybe uh everybody will be around the next meeting, but uh I I actually will not be around in the June meeting, the regular meeting in June. So uh I I don't know what you want to do with the uh approval of minutes and the election. Are you ready? I mean, comments on that?
As far as the election of officers, four of you were present, uh regular members, uh regular members who voted on the election of officers. And I bet I didn't redistribute the and it was this, but I'm sorry, I'm still working at work speed while I am still recovering.
Does anybody, does anybody have any uh desire to uh
I did not redistribute the minutes and I'm sorry for that, Eric.
Does anybody have any desire to take uh take over any office on this commission?
Great.
Please. Nobody has any desire to take over any office?
I would entertain uh being edumacated on exactly what 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 it entails.
You would do a fine job. I know that.
Well, I would just, I just don't have the right side of my body and my whole world is just a little different right now. So I just would like to know what the commitment is and what it entails and and I would consider it. And that's all. I'm not saying yes.
So basically, the chairman runs the meeting, um assaults with the staff on an absentee basis. That is often a call or so a month if necessary. And the vice chair steps in uh in their absence runs the meetings. Um, I think we probably have a town handbook that gives what each officer is, and I can share that. And then the secretary is who is listed on the uh public hearing notices and the decision notices as being the official record keeper. However, as we all know, we have the reporting secretary that actually writes up the minutes. In the past, the chair and or the secretary would stop by the office and sign the variances or other records and letters that got put on the land records and sent to the applicants a number of years ago. That was modified and staff now signs them as professional staff to the commission. We sign those letters and variances. Uh, we don't have to the chairman or the secretary can. Um, but if everyone's more comfortable, it'd be looking to see if um the handbook is or the boards of commissions has a little more detail as far as the tasks and requirements, we can um distribute that for the special meeting event.
Plus, there's no heavy lifting.
I I think I feel like I've been a little uh, you know, well, I died twice, so I'm glad I'm here. But um is everyone stepping down? Like, is is I'm confused. What is, can you please just clarify for me and update me? Is that, is is everyone?
And we can't, I couldn't quite understand the question. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the whole thing.
So is, are all positions available and is everyone stepping down? Like, is this a whole turnover here?
So so with any commission each year, a new slate or a slate of officers is voted upon. Um, it should happen at the first meeting held till the year um to the lack of business and the inconsistency of meetings. Uh, and we haven't done that for this year yet. This is only the second meeting that the ZBA has had this year. I'm thinking that the last meeting, there weren't enough regular members present to um to conduct this kind of business. Only regular members, both are officers. Uh, and so here are the uh the officers are either renominated, nominated, or agreed to fulfill the position when when they're nominated or not. So that hasn't happened yet and no one's been nominated.
I mean, last year, we had the secretary cast one vote for each officer.
That is another task of the secretary. Once the, once the nominations are done, it's the secretary that announces. Uh, this this board currently does not have a secretary appointed because the secretary um resigned and moved to a different board. We also don't have a secretary. We have a chairman and a vice chairman. Uh, we used to have co-vice chairman, but we also no longer have that board member. There is one more regular board member not present tonight. So I'll leave it up to the crowd and decide. Sorry to give me direction.
Uh, any suggestions? Yeah, I don't wait till the next meeting. I don't know what what to do at this point. I have a secretary.
Well, at the beginning of the meeting, you did comment that you were going to postpone this. So I mean, I know the town clerk would like to get it on the record. Um, however, if uh there's, if you don't have a slate to to propose right now, then um the opportunity to mull it over and make a a motion for nominations.
I nominate Tony for chairman.
Yeah, now we have a motion.
I nominate Lenny for vice chairman.
Well, I don't know. We can say we can continue this for the rest of this year in the N F D B A, you know. Uh, we have new people coming in. Uh, uh, there's a fellow named Mattson.
There's a new member, Brian Matson, who was unable to attend this evening.
Right. But I mean, you know, we've got some new people coming in and uh it'll be nice to have some of the people uh volunteer some of these uh positions. It would be, you know, it'll be nice because it will keep things going. Uh, we can't do this forever.
Is Ryan coming in as a re- as a regular?
So Ryan Matson is a regular?
Regular uh
Regular.
He's a regular. He's coming in as a regular. Uh, he was appointed by the uh top council.
And Christine was moved from an alternate to a regular member, in case anyone was not aware of that. Congratulations.
We lost a uh, we lost a uh
Sandy.
Sandy of uh
Capoliglio to the Plenian zoning commission.
Right, right.
And um Nelson Braca stepped out.
Right.
So uh my, with, right now, to recap, you have a nomination for Chairman Franklin India as chairman. Lenny Tubbs as vice chair. And uh there's still the ability to entertain the motion for a nomination for a secretary.
Corey or Christine, are you interested in a secretary position?
You're muted. Christine, if you're talking, you're muted. We see your mouth moving.
Can you hear me?
Oh, here you are, yeah.
If the secretary has to take out all the minutes and stuff, I think that would be too much. I'd be, I would be overwhelmed.
No, the recording secretary takes the minutes. Which is, which is Christine Delamain.
That's my job, Christine.
Okay, so what does the secretary do? I just, I think, Marie, can we just talk smarter in the day? I'm not I I'm, I get very worn out in meetings.
So what did you ask?
Uh, what does the secretary do? Very, very little. I mean, as far as like every once in a while, there's, you know, maybe a uh application that has to go to the town and kind of litter or something.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes signatures on documents that the staff prepares. Um, and they're going to miss a task that they have that is required, but uh that's substantially. And on other boards I've been on, the secretary has done some a minute of the minutes the reporting secretary prepares, but that hasn't been the case um in our office. Um and and the third person to step up is the chair and vice chair are not available. Is the third person to run the meeting.
Kind of feel a little pressure, like you need someone to fill the slot.
Well, it's not, I don't think it's necessary that we fill the slot right away. It just, I thought it would be if we're going to do it, I'd rather do it with somebody who's been on the board for a while and not with somebody new that's walking in and and never even seen what a zoning board meeting is, you know. And that's the case with Ryan.
I will, I will do it if uh someone will try me. If someone, you know what I mean? If I can just, if someone will just.
We staff or whoever would step into the position, staff would certainly, or any of the positions, staff would certainly um work with, and we do. We regulate the town hall in general, um including our town clerk. Regularly, we work with any obligations any of the board members have and what they need to.
You know, just give it a try. If you don't like it, if it doesn't, if it's too much for you, then you can say, you know, I I can't do it. But you can do it a shot if you want. I mean, it's, that's a pretty good view. You know?
Okay.
But you know, you're not, you're not obligated to do it for uh forever or even for a year. You know, if you find out that it's like, this is like too much for me or whatever, I don't know. You just say, hey, can't do it. You know, I mean, everybody understands that. Or everybody would understand that because it's a situation where, you know, it I, you know, my daughter-in-law passed away and I, you know, I was uh, they asked me to do some other stuff, uh, you know, uh for the Italian club and and a couple of other things. And I said, I can't do it because I too busy taking the kids back and forth to soccer and, you know, playing Uber or whatever. And, you know, I just kind of I did it for maybe a couple of weeks. I said, I can't do it. You know, you can tell somebody else to do it. You know, everybody was okay with it. You know, so it's a situation like that. I mean, it's, you know, if you get stuck, you know, if you can't, if you can't do it, you know, you can always uh say it was just too much. But if you try it, if you try it out and it works out good, then at least you got something else on your belt, you know, for, you know, a little bit of experience. Plus, it's a high man job.
I'll give it a shot.
So so just to recap, if someone, um, we do have nomination made for chair and vice chair. We need a nomination if anyone desires.
I will nominate, this is Lenny, I will nominate Christine for secretary.
If everyone accepts those nominations, you could have that vote on the slate.
Well, we got a slate. That's the slate.
That would be the slate.
That was the slate. Um, you want to vote on the slate?
Yes, let's vote.
Okay, uh, I'll vote in favor of this slate. I, you can take a roll.
Aye.
White side, aye.
Mathina, aye.
I can't hear Christine.
Vote for yourself.
Aye.
Okay, so and just for the record, I, while, while um Hunter Mathina did vote aye, um, I don't think that vote counts because I don't think alternates are allowed to vote on it, but we have it. If we need it, we have it, but I'm sorry, Hunter, I don't think it's allowed.
But we have it if I need that vote.
So that unanimously carries.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn because I don't think we have a, I don't even have the minutes with me.
No, I'm sorry, those weren't distributed. I
So I'll make a motion to adjourn. Uh
Second, white side.
If you can just open, no, I, all in favor, no?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 What are you in?
Aye. Thank you, thank you so much, folks.
Our day forty-five.
Wasn't too bad. Getting better.
Thank you, everyone.
Memorial Day.
Yeah, have a nice Memorial Day.
Yeah, have a great holidays, guys.
This position fills.
Stay safe.
Yeah, you too, huh?